Over, starting. I have my glasses on. Sorry. Okay. Let's call the order, the Finance Committee for Tuesday, September twenty twentieth, two thousand twenty-two. At the record show, all women are present. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the previous committee meeting of Tuesday, July nineteenth. Can I have a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Any one opposed? Carry. I know you received your monthly bills. Does anybody have any questions or concerns? Anything you'd like to ask Lenz? Nope, say none. Okay, we'll move on to unfinished business. I don't believe we have any. And then new referrals for consideration. One of the things, I read the article in The Times Herald about the sales tax. And so I just wanted, Lenz, if he could, to just kind of give us a snapshot of where we are in the second quarter. And I think it's a combination of good and we did decrease a little from last year. So, Lenz, how about if I hand it over to you? And this is the handout that you gave us?
Yes, that's, that's, that's correct.
Okay.
So that package you have in your hands, there's about seven pages in there. On the first one is where we are for the year two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three. If you look at June, the month of June last year, as you give, we almost collected a million dollars in June last year. Because this year, we only collected five hundred thousand dollars. There's, there's a little something goes down there. And for the last quarter, we collected two point two million dollars. And if you add it September to it, that's giving you a total of one point six billion dollars. Is there any questions there?
Lenz, it looks like we're, we're trending about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars less than last year. Is that, is that about right?
That, that's, that is correct, yep. I, I can't really tell you why, I, I wish I could tell you, there was no why for it, but I, I really can't.
I mean, I, I can't, it's called inflation. It's called, it's called people, people are spending less.
Yeah, but I get it, I, I just didn't want to go there.
Well, and I think the other, you know, I read the paper, the article in the paper, and I talked to a couple of folks. You know, it's because I run into people and they ask me questions. And one of the things that, you know, I kept hearing from folks is last year, the government put money into the account. You know, the stimulus, the extra money for unemployment. And people were going and spending back on things. And this year, they don't have that extra money, so.
Yes, that, that is the key. Last year, there was more money to move around. This year, we don't have that. That's, that's one of the reasons why. Also, I, I do not have the report for the last quarter. Because it's not, it's not available yet. But if you look on this, the other page behind the first page, that, that was two quarters ago. Which doesn't really help us, but that was back last fiscal year, if you will. But the main driver for the sales tax, that was your gas, gasoline, natural gas, your car dealerships. And down below, that's where we tell so, and then restaurants. But we have about like six hundred pages. I only put out the five pages, five pages, that's the most, the most recent, if you will. Because the other ones are mostly like one, one hundred dollars, two hundred dollars, fifty bucks. I only put it out with the most expensive one that we have. I did concede gasoline at about sixty-six thousand dollars back in May. I'm pretty sure it's probably gonna be about the same trajectory from the last quarter. But unfortunately, I would not have that report until mid-October. Because the report is due today, September twenty-eighth, September twenty-eighth. And then the state will take about a month to get the report ready for us. So I will get it in mid-October-ish coming month.
Okay. Yeah, the article, it basically said we were down one point five percent as compared to last year, August of two thousand twenty-one. Which should have been our last fiscal year. And it accounts for eight months prior to that. And I think the paper made the mistake. He said that as the county goes, you know, their budgets from June versus ours. The county actually goes the calendar year. But it was just interesting, you know, we'll see how it's dipped and hopefully it'll come back up.
Well, that's what I'm hoping for. I'm hoping the next quarter to come, we, we make more. Because if you look at the bottom page, the first, if you look at the bottom page, I quoted it exactly one million dollars. So we kind of rely on that, so. And I'm, I'm, I'm gonna limit optimism, so I'm pretty sure we'll, we'll get there. But it's only been four months into the year, so.
Right. Okay, thank you, Lenz. You're gonna be happy.
We're gonna have your holidays coming up. I mean, the holidays isn't coming up, we're not gonna catch up, so.
I know, Christmas is out, the stuff is already out there.
Yeah.
It's disgusting. Okay, John?
So, I, I'm a doom and gloom type of guy when it comes to bear markets and interest rate hikes. And the reality is, interest rates drive car and home purchases. And home and car purchases, automobiles are one of the largest contributors to our sales tax revenue that we perceive here in the city. And so, although I agree with a wait-and-see approach, tomorrow, I believe the Fed is planning another historic rate hike. And when you compare where we were in terms of financing costs to a year ago, they, they've tripled. And so, that's going to continue slow. That's the purpose, right? Of rate hikes is to slow spending on big-ticket items. And at some point, it's gonna start catching up with people using credit cards for those purchases as well. So my doom and gloom is, I, I think at some point, possibly by the end of the year here, we may need to talk about how we're going to make our budget work in this, this fiscal year. Because I don't think, I'm taking a look at it, we were expecting another six hundred thousand dollars over what we received last year for revenue. That's what we had budgeted. We've got five point one million in our budget.
That's, that's good, yep.
For, for revenue, that I wouldn't be surprised if it's not a million dollars shy of that. Maybe that's way too doom and gloom, but possibly five hundred thousand dollars. So if we're already one quarter in and we're one fifty behind the eight ball, even if you trend that out to reoccur, as the rates continue going upwards, we're gonna have to have a serious conversation come the end of the year, how we're going to, certainly that's the mayor's call, but how we're gonna approach the second half of the year. And so those are, those are my, that's, this is my field. This is my, you know, expertise. And my serious concern is, we can't just sit, wait and see and expect to end up at five million dollars in, in sales tax revenue that, that may not materialize. And we should make some strategy, strategic changes sooner rather than later.
Lenz?
Yeah, if I, if I may say something. The thought was based on last year's collection, which is why I went with five point one million dollars. Because last year, we collected about five point five million dollars. So I, I, I was hoping we cannot go the same route that we did last year. But to go back to what you said, let's say in December, we could take a look into where we are and, and see how, what, what the mayor wanna do as far as spending. I mean, we could, everything could go like the mayor, if, if, like something, he put on the mayor to get any spending.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have to do, and this is just from inside of the equation, right? And thanks for pointing that out, Lenz. So we did bring in actual five and a half million dollars worth of sales tax revenue last year. We didn't, we only budgeted four point five, so, so we have, we were a million dollars over. So I do, so you did take a conservative approach, saying that we budgeted five million. And that would be, I mean, obviously, that's where we need to try to hit. So, yeah, my thought is exactly the same. We'll see what the mayor wants to do, what you guys want to do, maybe by December. And see where inflation is too.
Lenz, thank you. I just thought that it's important for us to look at these numbers, and as John pointed out, not wait till the end of the year to do it, but consistently each quarter, look at them. Because I think.
I will, I will keep an eye on it, and I will give you information as, as they come in and go from there.
Okay. And thanks for the handout. That's very helpful.
Thank you.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions? No. Let's see, committee reports. Tiffany, do we have any?
I want to do sales cap.
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot that was there. That was adding, I'm sorry. Sales tax for two thousand.
Or tax cap.
Tax cap, that's true. Two thousand or twenty, twenty-three. John, I think you put this on.
So, not, not to be more doom and gloom, and maybe, maybe we're still, I don't have enough data for us from, from NICOM. But I was, I don't know, I guess I looked forward the other night. And I wanted to see what was going on with, if there was any updates regarding two thousand twenty-three tax cap. And amidst this, this inflation. And we know everyone's battling, costs are absolutely through the roof. Our, our energy costs, our electric bills this summer have been like no other. And so, back in July, Denapoli released a statement saying that they will maintain a two percent tax cap through two thousand twenty-three. And so, that's, unless something changes, as far as the allowable tax levy growth goes, that's what we're facing. That's what we're up against in regards to our, our budget next year. And again, those are real concerns to what we already know is a tight budget. So, Mr. Mayor, was this something talked about at NICOM at all?
Well, NICOM will publish for the municipalities who are going to do the June one to May thirty-first budget year. That'll come out probably in December, what the allowable tax cap is. Now, you gotta remember, place in the law by New York State was that this tax cap cannot exceed, or the task cap is at two percent. Which means it's either the lower of two percent or consumer price index, whatever that represents. So if the consumer price index is at, let's just grab the number at five, we can still only go two. So unless we override.
Has there been, I mean, so if it's legislative, has there been any talk about making any sort of adjustments in Albany? Is something that we should, that should be communicated to our state rubber executives?
Yeah, there is, to the best of my knowledge, there is not any talks going on on that right now. But we can always pose our, our concerns to our state legislators. And the, the one thing that NICOM always looks at is, okay, what, what can be carved out? You know, on the tax, what, you know, major expenses, different things like that. So that usually gets talked about, and, and it usually doesn't go anywhere. But, you know, right now, it's law, it's two percent is the maximum. So, you know, unless, unless the state was to change that law, then that's what's added. It was, it was, it was, for the first couple of years, it was in, and then it became, after so many years, it became permanent. You know, it would take, it would take legislation from the state to, to change that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alvin, for bringing that up. And that's another thing we have to keep in mind. And I think the big thing is we have to stay within our means and just watch our spending. But going forward, I just encourage Lenz to just keep us up to date on quarterly sales tax and any other, even from NICOM or from the state, any other information that we should get. Okay.
I'll give that, maybe say something, and, well, I'm, I'm just trying to give you a quick picture, the two percent for next year. I mean, if, if it stays as, as it is, we're looking at about forty-eight thousand dollars, we can, we can, with the taxes by us, about it. So it's not a lot.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, and I think the thing that our constituents have to realize, obviously, as a municipality, we have to live within our means. But we also, you know, that pie is always so big, and we have to pay wages. You know, we can't change the agreements we've made with unions. We have to change, we can't, we gotta keep within certain parameters. One of the things that is coming is, for instance, fleet management. You know, we were talking about this at fleet management, where most vehicles you're ordering are twelve to eighteen months out. And so if we don't get in them now at the current prices and we wait, then those prices are only gonna go like anything else. They're gonna increase. That's just one thing, as a municipality, we have to keep in mind. So I just think we, we need to stay on top of it. We need to watch the numbers. And I know Lenz, you'll, you'll bring us any concerns. But I just want the council as a whole to understand where the numbers are. So going through the year into budget time, we're not blindsided, you know, we didn't notice. So I appreciate your work, and I, and thank you for the handout. And just keep us informed. So thank you, Lenz.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Can I have a second?
Second.
All favor? Ask for adjournment.
All right, we'll jump right into strategic planning. We call the board strategic planning for Tuesday, September twentieth, two thousand twenty-two. The record showed it all over in our present. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the previous committee meeting held Tuesday, September sixth, two thousand twenty-two. Could I get a second?
Second.
Saying my holden Robinson, all in favor? I oppose. Unfinished business is none. But we do have some new referrals for consideration, some, some new conversations here. As I'm starting to see, well, dog park rules. So, things have progressed at Oak Hill Park. A lot of the equipment has been installed, the fences is there. And, you know, I know it's still an active construction area. So I guess just right off of that, I would ask the mayor, as well as our DPW director, what their thoughts are as far as leaving that open, if there's any concerns currently. I, you know, I'm just thinking from a liability standpoint. I don't think we've really had any rules posted. Is it treated as the same way as a playground, where it's just, everyone assumes it's at their own risk? I know that we do, and I've got a start here for us to look at, a list of rules to consider. I'd like to get some feedback from all of you, and then also reach out. I believe the mayor had suggested that the Oleum Town Club had an interest in, in offering some suggestions on the, the dog park rules as well. So, you know, I'd like to have certainly their expertise on this as well. So just, I drove by, matter of fact, rode my scooter here tonight, and there were people with some dogs in the dog park area. Is it, is it good to go? Are there any safety concerns, any potential liability? I mean, what are your thoughts?
If I may?
Sure.
I think, if I remember, I think we, we have, there's money in that budget for signage. And I think when we originally started talking about this, we said, yes, we would want some dog park rules to go along with our, our rules in the park. So I think, you know, right now, our parks are open, I believe, like from six AM to ten PM. So we may want to keep that consistent with, with the parks. So I think, I think it'd be wise to, you know, post some rules. I don't think we need pages and pages of rules. I think we need somebody, somebody important to pilot it, rules, you know, to, you know, to go there and assign. And so the public using it, and we're gonna have, you know, we may have people coming in from out of town. We wanna make sure that, that they're aware of the rules for the, the dog park.
Agreed. Do we feel there's any, and maybe this is a better question for Jack? Do we collectively as a council, mayor, DPW director, are there any concerns with, as people are just using it on their own? Like tonight, you know, going by is just bad, okay? Should it be blocked until we have the rules placed? I'm just, I mean, again, maybe that's more of a question for our city attorney. Is it, is it done? Is it under construction still?
I, I don't think it's done yet.
The park itself is done, the sidewalk leading up to it, as of Friday, it has to be the head of the park yet. So the walkway up to it isn't there. There's a smaller dog park, one of the fosses there needs to leak, and so we gotta get back in and fix that. While all the other stuff is out there, most people are using it.
Yep. Do we have any concerns about that? About city attorney? And I don't, but. You're all women in the office. I, I. I mean, I, no, I, I don't know, there's, there's no major signage when you go to a park itself, right? But playground, I mean, it's kind of, everyone knows it's an assume, you know, your own risk type of thing. And I don't, I don't have a problem with it either. I just wanted to make sure, because it's gonna take us a little bit of time here to get these rules put together, get feedback, obviously, from the mayor, probably from our animal control officer would be beneficial. And, and from the Oleum Town Club too.
Do we need to involve all these parties in it? Don't, aren't they just pretty much common sense, slap a sign up? Like, what are we doing? Why, we don't talk about the pool, the rules at the pool or the rec center? Why are we talking about the rules at the dog park? We pay for things, we don't operate them.
Well, if I may, I mean, there is, just an example, I was kind of disgusted with it on Friday when I'm up there. There's a risk of liability years. I went in the smaller side, there were dogs in the big side, and found freshly smashed beer bottle. So if someone's coming in with a dog running around, they would have ran right over it. We liable now without a sign that says it at our own risk. I picked it all up, got a wear it by me, it was fresh and razor sharp. So we can't control that, unless we're up there every minute, but there is a risk there.
But unless there's a law that the county council can pass, that's not a council issue. Like, I don't want that to happen either, but that's between the mayor and the chief of police, and why are we talking about this?
Well, sorry. I'll be taking that.
I'm done, I'm done. Sorry, I'm just.
No, okay.
Yeah, of course, all the women.
I was just gonna say, I think I mentioned, when we were traveling, I stopped at a couple, at rest stops where they had dog parks. And basically, they, that's what they had, at our own risk, pick up after your dog, no food and beverages allowed. That was it. So I guess my question is, actually, our DPW director's question is, if someone were to take their dog in there because it's our park, wouldn't they be liable, just as they would be if their child got hurt on our equipment and it's our fault? You know, they can always put a claim.
I think that's really a question for the attorney.
Yeah, and he's not there, so. But that, those are what the signs I've seen, is just like a couple little things.
Right.
We, we could probably get a, a sign quickly made that says, "Dog park, use at your own risk."
Right.
And at least post there for now until we get all the rules in place.
All the women, Paul?
And, you know, I would say, fortunately or unfortunately, I mean, like, when you go to Franchot, there's actually a sign with some rules. I mean, it actually says things like, "Don't run" and stuff, which is interesting. I do think, you know, I think we need to consult the attorney. But there's always gonna be somebody that is going to, if their dog did step on it, I'm sure somebody would try and at least get restitution from the city, because I think that's kind of the day and age we live in. But I have seen pictures on Facebook of people using it. They seem to be enjoying it. So I would encourage us to, if we're gonna get something up, to, to try to do it quickly, so people can use it during the season. I mean, not to say they won't in the winter, but, you know. But I do think we need some kind of sign up if we tell kids not to run in Franchot. I guess we probably need something up there for common sense.
Yeah, I mean, you know, if you, if you go through with anything, with any good thing, it's government's job in some regards, I guess, to, to try to be proactive and, and eliminate the bad apples, right? The fact that when you take a dog into a dog park, you shouldn't send your five-year-old child and to supervise them, right? I mean, that there, there is a minimum age. Probably you should, you know, mandate that they are vaccinated, right? That they are licensed in the city of Oleum. So on and so forth. A, a, a big one, as, as much as it may be confrontational to some, is that your animals should be spayed or neutered. It lowers the aggression, statistically speaking. So, and, and if nothing else, if it's just a sign that says, "Play at your own risk," you know, as long as you're old, that's over a certain age, you know, you can take your dog in there. I think it would be beneficial to have what the switchboard, the, the police department, a switchboard phone number is, in case they need to put a call into our animal control officer. You know, there's a suggestion about reporting, you know, something to DPW, just having that phone number handy, any sort of problems or violations. Those, those sorts of things that would provide to the public with a quick reference point, I think would be beneficial.
I'm not many, but I just.
Yeah, of course.
I was always a big, like, the dog, dog park, next to them, there's people in my area, voice concerns that they would like that. But I was just thinking of what Mr. Thompson said about broken glass in the park. I mean, if somebody's bringing their dog there, I mean, I wouldn't think of broken glass being made around. And that could do some serious damage to a dog's foot. So I was just wondering, I don't know what our staffing is, but until we get a sign up or something, maybe one of the first things in the morning is have our parks department crew go down there and do a quick glance over to make sure there is no glass if people are starting to use that park. Because that could, for an animal, that could be a serious injury, you know? They have somebody, somebody's on, stepping on a broken bottle or something, so.
Soon as we do that, though, we're assuming liability, right? Like, there's a, there's assumed, "Use at your own risk," right? At, at any playground or any kind of thing like that, right? I saw kids playing on the fire pit wall thing, trying to eat whiskey, right? We don't have a sign on it that says, "Don't play on that." So if one of those kids got hurt on it, are we, you know, assuming liability? So we should send somebody down there to make sure it doesn't get, like, what do we? Seems like we're overthinking all this.
But it seems like we should probably put a sign up there as soon as possible.
Well, yeah, I agree with that.
Okay. Paul DeRonsen?
I just wanted to piggyback on a lot of comments that were made. With the numerous dog parks that I've seen, they all have signs. I've, I've never seen a dog park without a sign. A lot of the rules that are written on here correlate to the ones that I've seen. This one is a bit excessive, if we're talking about putting all this stuff on there. They're usually not that big. They normally have just, I don't know, one to eight rules. And they usually have a clause at the bottom that says, "Per city of Oleum, blah, blah, blah." You know, if, if someone's already throwing a glass bottle up there, it's just someone ignorant in the, in the city. You know, glass could, you know, really rip a dog's tendon. I agree with Paul. I don't think we need to police it. I don't think we need to put bodies up there. We put this in place so people in the city could have a, a place to take their dog and enjoy themselves. It's just a matter of everyone being considerate, cleaning up after your dog, taking care of your, your belongings, not bringing a bottle or a container or anything like that to the dog park in the first place. It's a park, it's a family park, there are kids involved. I think we should just, you know, like I said, just be a little more considerate. We can get a temporary sign for, for now, and then work on getting the permanent sign for later and call it good.
Yeah, there is a, and I do believe it's already installed, Director Thompson, there is part of our package that we purchased. There is an actual permanent sign up there. It just hasn't been, we have to tell them what to put on, right?
I believe there was something out about leash control, but there really wasn't much.
Yeah.
So we do need to work on it.
Yeah, so there's, there is a permanent structure there. But I think the mayor has a great suggestion. Maybe we just get some sort of a temporary signage up there, run it by Jack, and go from there. All the women, call?
So in, in keeping things simple, because too many rules nobody look at, what if we made it simple, but we actually had a QR code that would link to? but we actually had a QR code that would link to something that had the more extensive rules on it? Like, I think that dog trainers not to use it to conduct business is actually a great thing. I don't know, is we need to have that on the sign there? But if we had a QR code that was on there, then people could link it, it wouldn't be a sign that was, you know, eight foot by ten foot with all the rules.
Take park rules, put the QR code, everyone's got a phone, even the kids. Scan it, read the rules, a drone rest before entering this park. That puts the liability on the person to read the rules before they even step foot in it.
Alderman, uh, quick?
Yeah, I, I'm just curious, because I know how people pick up after their dogs on the city streets. Um, how often are we gonna have our park guys picking up the dog up there?
So that, that, that's actually a great question. I don't recall, have those been installed yet? The garbage bins and the, I know-
Plastic bags, I still recall when I saw, I, I threw the bottle, like, down in the regular receptacle, I don't know.
Yeah, that's something that we need to, uh, I believe we were gonna purchase those through, um, what is it called, state bid or, or, like, uh, with, with one of our preferred providers. Those, in life, the benches, I think are stuff that you can just get, um, cheaper than what the, the dog park equipment place was selling for. So, um, yeah, that is definitely led to something to help. Now, if that doesn't answer your question, when our park, you know, parks gonna be able to fit in, uh, going out there? But, um, certainly, every park I've ever been to has little, uh, plastic bags and, and garbages, garbage bins. Um, if we don't provide that, then that, that's not gonna work there, so.
Yeah, I'll follow up.
Thank you. All right, anything else? Okay, so I'll follow up with, uh, the mayor on this and see if he was moving along. Thank you very much for your time. Uh, anything else on this issue? All right, moving, um, on, I'm gonna ask just, uh, for the sake of following up and transparency. So, um, the next item here is the civilian review board, uh, the feedback. Uh, I forwarded this, um, to, I believe, everyone. The mayor reached out, and, um, after, what was it, a few weeks back, the, uh, police union, uh, attorney was here. Um, she made a, an empowered statement, um, offered, uh, their suggestions and, and their opinions. Um, I asked the mayor and the police chief if, if they would, uh, provide those, those, uh, written opinions to us. Um, and at, at the very least, um, send that to our labor attorney. Um, so, I, I get nervous when someone says that we didn't do something correctly, and, um, I, I think it's our job, I think we gotta do our diligence to, um, to dot the i's and cross the t's. And so, uh, Mr. Raccio commented back, and I wanted to go over that and at least share that feedback here tonight. Um, I'll highlight some of the, um, more intricate parts. Uh, but according to our labor attorney, um, many of, uh, the, uh, union attorney's criticisms, uh, related to the claim that the legislation curtails the power of the police chief, um, with citing a case that occurred in Geneva. Uh, Geneva's, uh, civilian review board had tried to establish an authority to issue conclusions regarding appropriate discipline and the power, uh, was a thinly veiled attempt to require the chief to adopt what the CRB's recommendations were. So that, uh, is not even close to what the, um, legislation that Alderman Panis, Alderman Robinson, myself, have been working on, uh, for the, the past number of months. The Geneva legislation that she referred to gave the CRB power to conduct investigations, uh, simultaneously with the chief's investigation and issue recommendations. There, uh, before the chief renders any sort of conclusion. Uh, so, Mr. Raccio drew a distinction, uh, between what Olean's proposed legislation and, uh, the, uh, Geneva lawsuit that, that came about. Uh, additionally, the union's lawyer criticized, uh, the, the draft legislation because it allowed, as she saw, the CRB to make recommendations to the mayor regarding police policies, and therefore restricts the mayor's authority. Uh, our labor attorney did not find that agreement, that argument persuasive, because the mayor has the authority under legislation to review the CRB's recommendations and either choose to implement, modify, or reject those recommendations. So it's, uh, in many ways, uh, his belief not different than the mayor receiving recommendations from any other, of civilian boards. The question of whether or not the CRB draft legislation is not well focused. Um, again, our, our labor attorney does not agree with those criticisms and doesn't find it to be persuasive. Um, our CRB, uh, clearly states what the purpose of it is, uh, and it's ultimately to, uh, provide a means for citizen complaints that regards, relates to police misconduct. Um, and therefore, so, and it must be noted, I wanna make sure, that it's, it's noted within our, uh, draft legislation that any action relating to the CRB's function, um, should stem from complaints. Um, personally, I, I agree, I, it should not be, uh, used and exercised in a generalized manner, uh, unconnected to the subject of a specific civilian complaint. In other words, it shouldn't just be open to, let's go find something. So those were, uh, some of the major takeaways. Uh, I wanted, I thought it was necessary to let the public know that we followed up with, um, our labor attorney, um, the concerns that were brought forward, uh, at this time. I will open up, uh, to anyone else, uh, feedback or comment. Okay, so the next step, uh, then, Joyce?
No, I just wanted to ask a question.
Of course, Linda, you were ready.
Thank you. Uh, no, I, I tend, um, we just read it, so I'd like to read it and really think about it. But I see a couple points in here that I think Mr. Raccio was right. Um, but I think, um, I'd like to take some more time and just read it and really think it over and kind of take in what you had said.
Sure. So I, I, I apologize, Linda. I, I forwarded it to the two sponsors, um, so I thought, I thought I forwarded it to everyone.
Nope.
I, my apologies. Did I forward it to the-
I saw it before, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't see it, so I apologize.
All right, so then I did, well, we're, anyway, yes, we have plenty of time. Um, we will be just circling back on the legislation, uh, we have passed, I believe. Tiffany, right, you and Jack went through, uh, defined to come and, and cleaned everything up, right? As far as, I mean, there was a couple, correct, uh, they pointed out a couple of grammar issues. Alderman, call?
Oh, no, I just said the grammar, making sure we got the grammar.
Yes, making sure we got the grammar, uh, straightened out. Anything else? Okay, um, no action here, I just wanted to communicate that to the council, um, and to the public. So, at, at this time, I will actually make a motion to enter executive session to discuss a personnel issue. Could I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Robinson, all in favor?
All right.